Hi, good morning. I'm sorry, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Budget of the Hall. If we get a roll call vote, please, Mr. Austin Weston.
Mr. Abraze. Mr. Barrows.
Here.
Ms. Cardello. Mayor Di Maria.
Yeah.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica. Ms. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Panerisi.
Here.
Ms. Sarny.
Yeah.
Mr. Parker.
Here. We have seven present. If we could all rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before I turn the meeting over to the presenters, I just wanted to make it known that both Ms. Cardello and Ms. Abraze cannot make tonight's meeting due to a previous commitment. So with that, Superintendent?
Thank you so much, Chairman Parker. Can everybody hear me? Is this good? Okay. So, good evening to every member of the school committee and to all of our families watching at home. So, tonight's presentation will actually be delivered by Chief Financial Officer Anu Jamp, and it focuses solely on the district's fiscal year 2020, 2022 budget. So, the plan, this plan is a result of many hours of collaborative work that we have done at every level of the Everett Public Schools. It's, you know, been passionate and thoughtful discussion amongst the entire team, school leaders, department heads, and staff. So, no area has been unexplored in our attempt to maximize our resources for next school year. I also cannot stress enough just how detailed this process was. So, this is our district's plan, but it is the result of a lot of time and planning that occurred on the back end, and it fully reflects the careful input of our principals, our assistant principals, our curriculum team, our special education department, and our English learner department. So, it was slightly different process that we followed this year to make sure that we brought everybody to the table to have very collaborative conversations so that their requests, while you may not see them sitting here to make the requests as they normally do, it's because they have actually been incorporated into our full budget for next year. Also, you know, this presentation goes well beyond the numbers, costs, and line items. It really is meant to illustrate the scope of the investment that we believe we need to make in our students and our schools. So, our budget, you know, the goal is to meet the myriad needs of all of our students from pre-K through high school. We have formulated strategies to meet the challenges that have been created by the pandemic, especially among our students who've been disproportionately impacted over this past 13 months and may, as a result, need extra targeted support and attention next school year. We've also identified ways to invest in our district in a forward-thinking and sustainable manner. And of course, this is a budget plan that also allows us to meet our core financial obligations. So, with that, I'm going to turn things over to our Chief Financial Officer, Anu Jamp.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to invite Ms. Giant.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to invite Ms. Giant. I'll take a thumbs up. Great, thank you. You move favorable. Welcome, Ms. Giant.
Thank you and good evening. To start with, it is important to point out that every facet of our fiscal planning and budget prioritizing is closely aligned with our core values, which are integrate, access, empower, and cultivate. I am privileged and honored to have helped plan a budget that works towards providing a first-rate education for all our students. Our core values are a good place to begin the complex process of making sure that we successfully meet this objective. A brief description of our core values are on this slide. I will not speak at any more length about them, as a little later I will provide examples of how the budget process is aligned with our mission. In our schools and classrooms, we are aiming to utilize a practice called whole-child development, which our educators and leaders have identified as the best way to meet the needs of our dynamic and diverse student population. Students need to feel healthy, safe, supported, engaged, and challenged. If they do, they develop curiosity, creativity, empathy, and confidence. This slide divides the EPS concept of whole-child development into five primary components. The first is rich instructional experiences. This requires a rich and robust curriculum that is built on culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. It needs to include a range of subjects and meaningful electives, including arts, science, PE, and languages. This is where budget planning and curriculum intersect. Component number two is positive social, emotional, and developmental relationships. As CFO, I am working with administrators throughout the district on ways to aid and assist our students who are facing adversity. This includes but is not limited to poverty, homelessness, food insecurity, learning obstacles, or lack of healthcare. Our budget needs to include flexible support systems for students and families. The third component is environments filled with safety and belonging. This is an area that is especially urgent, given the social and emotional stress the pandemic has created for so many of our students. Our budget is aggressive in meeting this challenge. Up next are integrated supports. From enrichment programs to extracurricular activities, we want our budget to allow for expanded and enhanced offerings for all our students. The fifth and final component is what we call intentional development of mindsets and skills. This refers to the importance of safely and successfully encouraging students to participate in new activities and experience different topics. So, how are the Everett Public Schools funded? The Chapter 70 program is the major program of state aid to public elementary and secondary schools. In addition to providing state aid to support school operations, it also establishes minimum spending requirements for each school district and minimum requirements for each municipality's share of school cost. The foundation budget and the local contribution are the two key parts of the Chapter 70 formula. The required local contribution is the minimum amount each school district is expected to pay towards its foundation budget. It is designed to represent each community's ability to pay or how much local tax revenue a city or town can reasonably raise and dedicate to the operation of its schools. It is important to note that the foundation budget represents the minimum amount required for each school district to provide an adequate education. So, it is a floor, not a ceiling. This is the district's net school spending budget. The Chapter 70 program is our main source of funding, but in addition, we do receive federal funds such as Title I, II, and III, and smaller competitive grants from both federal and state sources. Revolving funds are revenue from reimbursement grants like the school lunch grant and tuition from out-of-district students at the Devens. Capital funding is any funding we receive to invest in school buildings, usually through the city and the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority. How much the state and local government must spend on education is determined by the number and characteristics of the students served. Enrollment and funding are therefore closely linked. In Everett, our enrollment increased quite dramatically from 2011 through 2016 and then evened out. For the 2020-21 school year, our enrollment dropped due to COVID, driven largely in the early grades. Large cohorts are, however, moving through the system and reaching high school. The enrollment projection methodology used here is based on two factors. The first is the size of the cohorts moving through the system. The second is the percentage of students progressing to the next grade level. Due to the unique circumstances of COVID, we are projecting our student enrollment in FY22 to be 7,212, which is an increase of 330 students or 5% of our student population. As this chart shows, projections call for our enrollment to approach or top 7,381 students by 2024. In addition to funding, this does bring into sharp focus another issue facing our district: space. The enrollment projections for our upper grades specifically show bubble classes moving up and a heightened need for space. This slide shows our projected fiscal year 2022 budget. Our overall budget projection is a little less than $94 million, representing a 12% increase from this fiscal year. Focusing on our net school spending budget this year with the passing of the Student Opportunity Act, Everett's budget includes funding for year one of that act. For Everett, this means $90, 9.7 million in additional Chapter 78. These are substantial figures, driven in large part by tax dollars and the efforts of local and state leaders to generate more funding for education. We are grateful for these resources, and we're committed to utilizing them in the best, most far-reaching ways possible. Turning from revenue to key cost considerations, there are three key factors to keep in mind. First, our district is losing the $1.5 million relief grant that currently funds 15 interventionists and EL positions at our schools. These positions will need to be preserved through the general fund. Second, the budget as it stands now continues to include the Devens lease, a cost that is not allowable under net school spending. A third consideration to remember is that the State Department of Education is allowing municipalities to claim up to 75% of the school district's SR allocation towards their increase in their required contribution. This would effectively reduce our SR allocation by roughly $1 million. For those who don't know, SR stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or CARES, which was established to address the impact of COVID-19 on elementary and secondary schools. Our core values and whole-child development served us well as we took a step back and looked at things from more of a big-picture perspective. And with this, we are aiming to achieve three things. One, we are preparing for a regular school schedule in 2022, but one that will require us to help get many of our students back on track after this unprecedented and difficult year. This means pumping considerable resources to our schools in the form of increased staff to meet the social, mental health, and safety needs of our students, as well as implementing tailored educational opportunities that are aligned with the whole-child approach. We have to greatly boost our out-of-school supplemental and enrichment services from after-school programming to mentoring and tutoring initiatives. A key component of our budget process this year was the collaborative work that we did with our principals so they could plan for the 2122 school year in accordance with the district's goals and objectives. In this sense, we have been more deliberate and ambitious. We have given our school leaders the chance to identify and plan meaningful investments in their students right now, which is a better way to formulate a budget, and it will directly benefit our students in the form of things such as athletic and music opportunities to clubs and activities to field trips. All of this points to our exhaustive efforts to maximize every dollar at the district and school level. The district budget can be broken into three categories. One, direct school expenses. This covers expenses directly in schools, including teacher and para-professional salaries and non-personnel costs associated with the school. Two is central administration. This includes the salaries of all our central office administrators and staff. Thirdly, there are school services budgeted centrally. This refers to costs that are school-related but easier to budget for and manage centrally. Examples include transportation, facility maintenance, custodial staff, and academic department heads. The reason for the FY22 increase seen here is because we are holding district investment funds centrally until these programs get deployed to schools. So, positions such as the academic advisor, social-emotional coordinators, COVID liaisons, and partnerships like City Air. At a glance, we can highlight three projections. One, school-based salaries are increasing at an average of 10% due to anticipated contractual raises and new school-based personnel. Two, our projected out-of-district special ed costs are rising by 16% due to our projected increase in student enrollment and tuition rates. Finally, we are projecting a 12% increase in transportation costs due to student enrollment and contract prices. The biggest cost driver in our budget will always be our most valuable asset: our educators and employees. This accounts for a shade less than 60% of our total budget. The other non-negotiable items that we spend our money on are chargebacks to the city, transportation for our special education and out-of-district students, and tuition for students placed out of district. Operational costs such as electricity, gas, and internet access, and supply costs such as copy machines, textbooks, and online platforms. This leaves us less than 5.7% for making thoughtful, impactful investments that will aid in furthering our student growth. This slide refers back to our core values. It provides clear examples of the direct link between budget, instructional, social-emotional, enrichment, and family priorities. The figure at the bottom of each column represents what we are proposing to spend above net school spending. In November of 2020, we outlined a multi-year investment plan. Year one, which is this fiscal year, was built around addressing the needs of remote learning and developing a system designed to help students thrive. Year two, or fiscal year 2022, seeks to build on those systems. Our first priority is to address the instructional rigor tenet of whole-child development. We want to drive student excellence focusing on STEM and literacy, academic response advisors, and a catalog of programs focused on instructional rigor. Additionally, we need to provide students with integrated supplemental supports, including summer programming, credit recovery, and after-school tutoring. These investments are all listed out in the backup budget documents provided to you today. Turning to our transportation needs, we are reaching the final stages of an extremely uncertain year for all students. And in any circumstances, it is difficult to assess and predict the needs of our special education and out-of-district students with certainty. What is within our control is the rate we are charged, as the EPS is currently in a contract with Malden Transportation. This rate does increase next year, and in addition, we are uncertain about the number of students we will be transporting. Using an average methodology, we project our transportation budget line to be a little over $5 million, an increase of $521,000 over our current transportation costs. To repeat something we said at the outset, an essential theme of this budget presentation is the need to make investments that lead to long-term and sustainable growth. To do so, we must make bold decisions driven by the needs of our students. The investments we plan to make take us above our net school spending budget by $9.2 million, but they are ones we have identified after thoughtful planning and careful identification of what programming is the most impactful. Sustainability is a crucial element to our strategy. The city and the EPS can work together to ensure these investments are maintained long after any stimulus funds disappear. It is always hard to plan for permanent improvements when there is year-to-year uncertainty into a district's bottom-line number. A way to address this is to plan with a wider lens. This leads us to what represents the most fundamental and strategic departure from the district's past budget practices. In addition to coming before you with an FY22 budget, we have developed a blueprint for 2023 and 2024 as well. Our chief rationale for this is simple. An education is not a year-to-year proposition. The massive needs of our students are a constant. To this end, we are asking for a $35 million commitment to our students over the next three years. This is as ambitious as it is necessary. We see this as the best way to give our students the support and stability they need when they come to school, from the teachers they interact with, to the electives and programs that support them, to the dynamic opportunities they have access to. This investment will give us a large measure of predictability in what we can provide over multiple years, not to mention certainty on the city's part about where its education resources are being directed. This slide outlines the three-year plan in broad terms. This coming year will enable the EPS to layer tailored supports across its schools. As you would expect, this features significant efforts to address pandemic-related learning loss and social-emotional services. In FY23 and '24, we will enhance and expand our reach across all grade levels. This includes an expansion of career and technical education offerings at Everett High, expanding electives in middle school, and building on supplemental services like summer programming. Other goals are the build-out of a robust after-school program and an expansion of supplemental services such as credit recovery. We welcome any questions you may have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions of Ms. Giant? Mrs. Murray?
To you, Ms. Giant, through the chair. I just wanted to ask the clarifying question. So, when all of the non-negotiables are paid out of our budget, we have 5.7% left over to implement any vision that we have in terms of moving the school system forward. Is that essentially what you were saying?
Yes, that is correct, because we have, from our budget, 60% of it goes to salaries. And then the other things that are almost kind of like fixed costs are chargebacks, which account for about 20%, 21% of the budget, and then special ed out-of-district and transportation, which is roughly 4% and another additional 5%. So, once we take those out, and then facilities are things we have to pay for, in essence, to keep the lights on, right? So, that's another $5 million. So, after we take all these items out, yes, we are left with about 5.7% of our budget that is really, you know, a budget that we can, we have some, a little more flexibility over.
Thank you.
Okay, so you know the hands raised. So, Ms. Giant, so... I'm sorry. Mrs. Limbitt, did you want to ask a question?
I had a question.
Oh, please.
I'll defer to Ms. Sarny.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I just had a question. Mr. Chairman, the budget that's being presented to us, are we going to get a breakdown of everything and then going over another night? The line items and everything, because right now, I know, I just came from work from another meeting, so I'm just jumping, you know, came on, and I don't have really anything besides what was presented in front of me with a slideshow. But are we going to get something in front of us and have another night of a budget meeting and go over each, everything, and discuss? Or is this what's being presented to us tonight, and we accept it?
Okay, so what we're being asked to tonight is to accept the proposed overall budget number. That there would have to be then negotiated between the administration, the mayor's office, and the CFO. They would then come back with what that final budget number would be, and then we would break it down into the traditional line item format with a different view than you're used to.
Exactly. Is there a way that we can have another meeting and sit down and go over the line items from each department, like from each school, and making sure what the requests are? Because, you know, like I said, it's new to me, so I just want to make sure what I'm, you know, looking at and understanding and making sure.
Okay, so if I could, unless someone wants to step in. Ms. Giant, do you want to explain the process? All right, throw a question, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with Ms. Sarny if she was, if she had gotten a copy of the budget book that we had sent everybody today as well, so...
No, I have not, because I have not gone home. Like I said, I came from work, came right to the closest place to jump on my phone, so I have not been home to look at the book.
Okay.
And to look at something just today wouldn't be sufficient enough to me. I would have to look at it at least like if we got it Thursday or Friday, and then that's something I can say, okay, you know, let's go move forward. But to me, looking at something on the same day or five minutes before, I don't find, you know, something that we should be looking at right away and make a decision.
Well, again, this is being proposed to us. We are not making a final decision tonight on the budget.
All right.
So, tonight is the ask, right? We are going to ask the mayor and his staff to review our proposed budget with our administration and then negotiate a final number. Right now, if I'm doing my math correctly, the proposed operating budget for fiscal year '22 is $103,547. So, you know, and then we would negotiate, you know, up or down with the administration. And then, once we have that number, we would go back towards, you know, what you've seen in the past as far as meeting as a committee, going over line by line, understanding what the schools are looking for, what we can support, and then voting on that, also providing a public hearing. And once we go through all those steps, we would finally then present it to the city council.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. It's a little bit different this year, so it's a very, very, very good question. So, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Ms. Giant. And so, I love this for a lot of reasons, but, you know, putting COVID this side, there was already an opportunity gap. So, for Everett, can you explain how this, I guess my question is, how are we best utilizing the technologies and investments that COVID forced us to make to be able to help close that opportunity gap and invest in the instructional, you know, alternatives or adaptations that will make sure that every student has an opportunity?
So, we did receive SR or CARES money as well, as everybody knows. And a useful way that we have looked at SR money is that they will fund, only for a period of time, services and programs that the district does need to continue forever. So, the approach and philosophy we use is to help students recover from this unprecedented school year. That doesn't come with an expiry date, so unlike our SR funds. So, things like tutoring, enrichment, mentoring, these are all what we think of as permanent elements of what of the whole-child approach, and what we would also want to continue as permanent elements of EPS. So, SO can help address some of this for the short-term period, and this is why we're coming into, with a request of a $35 million investment over three years, because that is, that is, SR is just the short-term piece of it. The pandemic also shined a light on issues that have long existed and aren't going away. So, it's up to us to address those as a district and supplement what was our, you know, quickly expiring SR funds with a long-term commitment like this.
Was there any, or maybe it was by school, discussion about how we can kind of reimagine some of the opportunities based on the technology investments, based on a lot of what we did by necessity? You know, how can we use those learnings in continuing to address those gaps as we approach a normal school year, you know? And I hate to say "normal" because I don't think it will ever look the same, and I guess I kind of don't want it to. So, I was just hoping, or maybe it was just school-based, but were there any district investments in that type of technology, alternative thinking?
Yes, so we did have a curriculum team that did meet to kind of assess all the online learning platforms and all the platforms that, curriculum that was utilized over this remote learning period and kind of draw a roadmap of sorts of what was effective, what was not, what we should be continuing to do as we move into the next school year. So, in addition to the individual school meetings that we had with principals and their staff, there were like district meetings that we included with department heads, as well as our curriculum team met with curriculum-specific teachers and kind of created a work, a work plan of sorts of what was effective, what was not. So, that curriculum investment has been included in this proposed budget as well.
Thank you so much. And again, I just feel like this budget brings us to the bare minimum of... brings us to the bare minimum of competitiveness, but it's an investment that we'll see growth over years. And so I'm very much in favor of the three-year investment and look forward to all the returns our students will see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Murray?
This might be too nitpicky at this point, but in terms of looking out three years, will there be financial benefits to, you know, being able to give contractors three-year contracts instead of one-year contracts? Will there be financial benefits, basically, essentially is what I'm asking, to planning that far ahead in terms of, or do you foresee or predict any possibilities of financial benefits to rolling out that far ahead in terms of being able to negotiate with our partners and/or our providers?
I think there's always a benefit to creating long-term contracts over, you know, three to five years. What we have experienced before is even if you have a long-term contract, you are getting better pricing, but we, as you know, have not obviously been able to, we're not able to do that unless we're sure that we have the funding to support three years. So usually what we go into is a one-year contract with the option to renew, but that may not necessarily be giving us the best pricing, right? And I mean, obviously, I'm new to Everett, so this is coming off of my experience with Boston Public Schools, but that is kind of, in a sense, what it looks like in terms of savings for contract. Yes, if we do work with vendors to get three-year contracts, we definitely will get better pricing.
Further questions, Mrs. Murray, at this moment? Okay, I'm going to recognize Mayor Carl Di Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, through you to Anu and Superintendent. Thank you very much for the presentation. I didn't, I didn't get it myself. I think, I think it was in my mailbox that someone delivered to my home. I thought I saw it when I drove by earlier. I will definitely look at that, and I definitely look forward to our conversations that we will have with the administration on the budget. I, is, just one thing I knew, are you taking into consideration the S R funds at all? Because I know we're looking at like five to probably ten million dollars. I know the number's not final, but I'm sure when we get that final number, I'm sure we'll be able to use those funds to help support this budget, right? Are you also thinking that, too?
Yes, we definitely are taking S R funds into consideration as well. It's just our plan for all funding is to balance kind of impact with sustainability. And since those funds do come with an expiry date, we do risk a fiscal cliff of sorts, you know, if our spending is not strategic and thoughtful. So while COVID has been, is going to be used for, you know, mainly one-time investments to address learning loss, help with our technology needs, PPE, cleaning of the buildings, et cetera. It has also, COVID has exposed issues that we need to address over the long term, which is where our three-year plan for funding really comes in.
And I love it. I love it. And I, just knowing a lot of families, even my own, my own child, just the issues they're going to face when they get back to school. It's just, you know, we're feeling as parents, I think all of us parents are feeling it. So I appreciate the three-year plan. I appreciate having, not to have to mid-year look to take money from free cash. I like this. This is very good of you to all, to do this, to do this work, to put this budget together and have a complete budget, not only just for this year, for the next few years. So thank you very much for that. I look forward to having our conversations on this. And I do want to say, I know the conversation is always about the achievement gap. And I have to say, this school committee that I've served with for fourteen years, these prior administrations, we did a good job of making sure that our kids never went without. And I look at guys like, you know, School Committee Parker and Panerisi that I served with for a long time. We always made sure our children had all things necessary. We may not have budgeted at the beginning of the budget cycle, but we always found the money to make sure that our kids got the resources they needed to close that achievement gap. So Amakoni, who I served with for years also. You know, so I know, I love it that we see it at the beginning and that we can, you know, work this out in at least taxpayers, at least we know when we're setting our budget, exactly how much money we can set aside for, like we do police and fire and public works. Now we can have that for our schools. So again, I look forward to reviewing it. I'm sure you did a wonderful job. Another question. So when you work with the curriculum advisors and the curriculum teams, were principals also involved in those conversations? Each principal from different locations? I'm seeing, yes. Nodding on the heads. That's good, because I know that there, at the end of the day, the principals, some should be responsible for what's happening in their buildings. And, you know, and I'm glad that they were consultant, consulted in this process. I have no other questions. Thank you for the presentation, Seem. Or Alex.
All right. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I could add, you know, the the final book on a line-on basis will look different than you've seen in the past. And one of those big differences is that we're going to budget by school. Am I correct in saying that? So you're actually going to see, to the mayor's point, you know, what the budget is for the Webster School, what the budget is for the Devon School. You know, we haven't had that type of granularity in the past, and that's one of the things that you're going to see this year and moving forward. So, Mrs. Murray?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to back up and reiterate what the mayor said. I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say that as a taxpayer and a parent in the system, I appreciate the team spending the time to really sort of plan out and not go year-to-year. I appreciate looking to fill the gaps, whether it's for our highest-achieving children who have been sidelined by the pandemic, or our lowest-achieving children who have been sidelined by the pandemic. I think we're going to see a lot of needs across the country, if this isn't an Everett-specific thing. But I am grateful to be part of a city and a school system that is trying to take the long view and not just try to patch things together endlessly, both as a parent and as a taxpayer. So I just want to reiterate what, and sort of reinforce what Mayor Di Maria said. Thank you.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and really again, the comment, and I didn't say achievement gap, I said opportunity gap. And so one of the things I really like about this, just in glancing, is the imagination behind it and the equity as far as enrichment in elementary schools, as far as alleviating some of the burden that, you know, sometimes happens with PTOs supplementing. And every school has different abilities to raise. So I want to be very specific in what I'm saying in the opportunity gap, in that every seven-year-old, every ten-year-old can literally be whatever they can imagine. And that's different than the achievement gap. So, you know, and investing in this and really creatively investing in our children and prioritizing that right down to the K three-eight level, right down to, because you never know what will spark a child's love of learning. It could be that field trip that we wouldn't have been able to send them on. And so things like making field trips equitable across schools and not dependent on PTOs, that's huge. And if I may, if I can make a motion to accept the bottom-line number and refer to the superintendent to negotiate with the mayor and CFO in the form of a motion.
I would second that.
Okay, and for the record, can we have that bottom-line number? I mean, if it's with chargebacks, my math says one hundred and twenty-nine million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
It's this page, right? Is that the page?
No, it's, I, I'm going to say it's more like.
Yes, you're right, Mr. Parker, with the, with the chargebacks included in it.
Yeah, so for the body, if you can go towards the end where it says, what is the district's fiscal year twenty-two projection above net school spending look like? So ninety-three point eight million dollars is currently our operating cost. And the ask over and above net school spending would be nine point two. So those two numbers plus chargebacks gives me approximately one hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. And if I can, on the motion, I'm really encouraged by how people are embracing this proposed budget. You know, as the mayor pointed out, you know, he likes the idea of a three-year plan. Because, you know, he recognizes along with us that, you know, there's capital improvement that goes on all the time in this, in this city. And it's not just roads and sidewalks, but it's human capital. And to see that, you know, the mayor's on board. You know, and I'm saying, we're going to get every cent we're asking for, but obviously, you know, from his statement, the questions he asked, we got in the S R money, and he's certainly going to try. So thank you. So with that, we have a motion before us to accept the proposed number of approximately one hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, one hundred and twenty-nine million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, of which we're going to ask the administration to then negotiate with the mayor and his staff to come up with that final number of which then the micro budgeting process will begin. Today we're talking macro. We'll be coming back to talk about the micro. So with that, if I can, have a roll call vote from Mrs. Celestin.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
You are muted, Mr. Parker?
Okay, so I want to be recorded as yes. And we have seven affirmative, zero the negative. You have moved for favorable action. No other questions, the comments. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. On a point of personal privilege, I would like to speak and remind members of the community who are watching, as also my colleagues, regarding a very important upcoming event that's happening in our city. It's a rally in support of our Asian-American Pacific and Island population and our friends, our neighbors. And it's happening this Thursday. It's being organized by the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and the mayor. And it's happening this Thursday at five PM at the Warner Park here in Everett. And we'd like to invite everyone to join in support of our Asian-American friends and say there is no place for hate in Everett or anywhere in America. So members of the community, those who are watching us, and our members here also present, this, it's an open invitation for the entire public, again, this Thursday at five PM here in Everett. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrows.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion made in a second to adjourn. Can I roll call?
Mr. Barrows? Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert? Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative. You have adjourned. The meeting has concluded. Thanks for your time.
Just want to wish everyone a happy Easter and happy Passover.
Mr. Parker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Happy Easter, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Please, Pasqua.